Evening. I'd like to call to order again the Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for November 2, 2020. We did open our session officially at 6:00 PM this evening and then went into executive session to, in which we discussed a possible purchase exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiation position of the public body. We've just, a couple minutes ago, went out of that session. We did continue discussion. We had some questions about the real estate under consideration and asked for more information to come back to us. After that, we're now moving back into open session, and I ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Joe, we'll move to, next to weekly briefing, and of course, COVID-19's on our mind. And I see Megan, you sent us an update just before the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, before we begin, we're just trying to ascertain whether Selectman Ford was able to join the go-to meeting.
Excuse me. We'll pause for a second and...
So it appears that...
Selectman Ford on the call?
Yeah, so whoever's caller one, if that's Selectman Ford, indicates that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Well, in any event, we'll get into the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Stephen, if, when you catch up, just interrupt us, let us know you're on the line. We appreciate very much you joining us on audio. Joe, you want to go next to Megan then?
Actually, before we turn it over to our Public Health Director, there's quite a bit of information that occurred today that board members should have in front of you. What you, what you see in your desk, excuse me, your station is, in addition to Megan's weekly report, which we'll talk about in a moment, you should see several documents, the first one of which is entitled, or is labeled, COVID-19 Order Number 53. It indicates that the order requiring, requiring early closing for certain businesses and activities, limiting hours for alcohol and adult-use cannabis sales, and modifying Chapter 138 license renewal requirements, that was issued this afternoon at 1:00 PM by Governor Baker. In addition to that, you should see an Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission advisory that is specific information from the ABCC as it regards to licensed establishments under the governor's order. Then you'll see COVID-19 Order Number 54, which is revised order further regulating gatherings in the Commonwealth. And then the last item you'll see there is COVID-19 Order Number 55, revised order requiring face coverings in public places. And in a moment, I'm going to lean quite a bit on the Public Health Director. But first, let me get my camera on to demonstrate, you know, one of the things we know we're going to have to do, you've seen me throughout the months that we've returned from the surge of pandemic, and the board has returned here to the Griffin Room, one of the things under face coverings that you'll see is whether you, if you're in a public space such as we are, starting at one minute past midnight on Friday, we'd be required to have masks on. So our meeting next Monday would be the first time we do that. And very quickly to dive into that, the protocol that I would ask is that when you're not speaking, you wear your mic, your mask. When you are speaking, you can bring your mask down to be heard. My fear is that with all of us with masks and the microphones, we may not be heard distinctly. Having said that, quite a bit of information was released this afternoon by Governor Baker and his administration. And I had a call with our Public Health Director and public safety officials to review what we heard from Governor Baker. Then, of course, we received the actual orders that are printed out. And after that, Megan and I participated in a Department of Public Health call. So there's quite a bit of information going on here. I'm going to confine my remarks to anything that was released today by the governor that impacts upon licensed establishments for you as the local licensing authority, and then generally at the end, speak about what it means for the town of Harwich as a business operation, if you will, that has employees and customers, for lack of a better word. So with regard to the establishments, you'll see that that is covered by Order Number 53. And again, it talks about requiring early closing for certain businesses and activities. And if you draw your attention to Page 3 of that document, Section Number 1 talks about a mandatory nighttime closing period for certain businesses and activities. And I won't read the vast majority of it, but it says, "Effective at 12:01 AM on November 6, 2020, all businesses, facilities, or activities included within the categories listed below must close their premises to the public each day not later than 9:30 PM, and may not reopen their premises to the public before 5:00 AM the following day." And in notation, you'll see that that's referred to as the mandatory closing period. And if you drop down, you'll see that businesses, facilities, and activities subject to the daily mandatory closing period, the first one listed is restaurants, provided, however, that restaurants may offer food and non-alcoholic beverages for takeout and by delivery during the mandatory closing period. So the net effect of that is restaurants do not have to close, per se, at 9:30, but they can no longer conduct table service, and they should only then, beyond 9:30, doing takeout and delivery and not doing any takeout or delivery of alcoholic beverages. So that's obviously a change in what the local licensed establishments are familiar with since some of the earlier orders went out. And I think the best way that we can say it is under the ABCC advisory, which staff is already working to distribute immediately to all of our licensed establishments. The mandatory closing period for sale and service of alcohol in the ABCC item says that, effective this Friday, all retail alcohol licensees must close their premises to the public by 9:30 PM. So they're talking restaurants, in-store dining only, but they're also talking about package stores as well. So significant information and impact on licensed establishment, so more on that later. And as I mentioned, I would like to have just a general discussion or an update with the board on how we see these things impacting upon government operations. Spoiler alert is not significantly, but I think the net effect of everything that Governor Baker and his administration are talking about, and no surprise to anybody, but as we get into colder weather, we're seeing an uptick in the Commonwealth in cases, and this is a reaction to that. So at this point, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is hand it directly over to the Public Health Director, so she can give more input. And then, as we talk to Cindy Williams and the businesses, we can do a deeper dive on how it impacts businesses.
Okay. Just a quick question, Joe. How long do we expect this? Do we have any expectations? Is it...
I think that's a question I'm going to punt right over to Megan, only because I asked a similar question of, where did this come from? And I think she might be better prepared to weigh in on that question than I would be.
Sure. Hi, guys. Well, we do know that the governor's office has gone off of basically three-week trends. So they look at data that goes over a period of at least three weeks. So I would say we would be in this state a minimum of three weeks, and I anticipate it actually going probably more than three months, because it is getting to be that wintertime when people gather together inside. We have seen a big doubling, if not tripling, of our numbers in the past two months. So we've seen trends significantly going up throughout the entire Commonwealth. Cape Cod, Harwich, we haven't seen quite the huge range that the other parts of the state have, but we are seeing an uptick in our numbers as well. And the hospitals, both hospitals have two patients per hospital just today. So we're seeing bigger numbers in positive cases. Clusters is really what is driving this. We're seeing that it's, we're not seeing spread in a restaurant or retail store setting, we're seeing it in gatherings. And that is why a few of these new orders are in place, is mostly because of the gatherings. But they want to recognize that we're going to be going back indoors, and that's where COVID-19 spreads the easiest, is inside. So going, going back on the limited, the number of people inside for gatherings and things like that are really what's driving this. So I, three weeks at a minimum, but I really do anticipate going through most of the winter with what we have now, if not something more strict.
Okay. Thank you, Ma.
So I can, I can go through, I can go through the three revised orders plus the new stay-at-home advisory now, if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. So the first is the stay-at-home advisory from the governor's office. And if you remember, it started out as a safer-at-home advisory. It was never an order, it was always an advisory. During the early times of COVID, it was, you're safer at home. So we would encourage people to only go out for those essential needs. And now, we've changed that to a stay-at-home advisory, and it is really advising people to stay in their own household after 10:00 PM. They say to, in order to comply with the advisory, you would only leave your house to go to school or work or essential needs outside of those 10, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM hours. Also, not have gatherings in your home with anybody outside of your household. And again, this is after 10:00 PM. And the face covering orders have been revised as well, and we'll go over what those mean. Gathering size, limiting, limiting the number of people. So there's now a stay-at-home advisory, and that is for the, for the general public to be home at 10:00 PM. And it's not an order, you're not going to be arrested if you're caught out after 10:00 PM, but we're advising the general public to be at home and not at a party or a gathering, but instead be within your own household after 10:00 PM. And then, three, three orders have been revised.
Megan? Don has a question. Can he interrupt you?
This isn't going to make me popular inside my own house, but I'm asking this universally because there's been an opening up of the school systems, because they were all doing remote learning last year, and there's various permutations of hybrids, where there are some days going to school and some days not. I'm just reading into this, but I want an explicit comment from you. If this is an advisory from 10:00 PM on, that pretty much eliminates the possibility of friends having sleepovers, doesn't it?
It does. They're discouraged. So this stay-at-home advisory is, would include sleepovers.
We're back to that. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And the reasoning is, the data from DPH is showing that the clusters, the groups of the outbreaks are happening in younger people as a result of crowded gatherings, not, not planned events, not sporting events. We're not seeing it at school, not so much in restaurants. We're seeing it from evening parties, late-night activities. So that, that's why they're targeting the after 10:00 PM.
I get that. I just wanted to be explicit on behalf of all the parents across the Cape.
Yeah, they are discouraged. Being within six feet of someone that's not in your household is also discouraged, and that's tough for kids and for parents. So the first order is Order 53, and it's the one that Joe had talked about with the early closing for certain businesses and activities. It hits hard on the restaurants and the alcohol sales, but it also affects other things like drive-in movies, indoor and outdoor movie theaters and performances, close contact personal services, or things like barber shops and massages and other, other things where you'd be close, cosmetology, things like that. And not that we have any museums or cultural centers that are open past 10, but it also, it brings that into, into the order as well. And all of these places include private clubs, catering events, and anywhere that would provide alcohol is, there's that 9:30 cutoff time. And these, and for, these are, this order is enforced by the Department of Public Health, Department of Labor Standards, local Boards of Health and their authorized agents, and state municipal police are also authorized to enforce the order. And it does come with a violation of up to $500 per violation. And that's by non-criminal disposition. The second order is the revised gathering order, and it's COVID Order 54. And this order does go back, takes us backwards in the number of people we can have in, inside and outside for gatherings. And so we're going back to indoor gatherings at private residences, and other, any other place that's not an event venue would be a limit of 10 people inside. And outdoor gatherings at private residences in any other place that's not an event is limited to 25. And that's, that's quite a decrease. That's, that's gone back to where we were in Phase 2. We used to be able to have 25 people inside and 50 and up to 100 outside because we're a lower-risk community. So that's for, for indoor gatherings at private residences. And then it gets a little more confusing when we talk about events in public settings. So this is for weddings or parties or, say, like a baby shower or any other type of event where you would have an organized event. So those organized events are organized by someone who's making sure there's social distancing happening and masking and handwashing, sanitizing. So that limit is a little bit higher. So we're, we're looking at a 25-person limit for indoor gatherings and outdoor gatherings. Since we are a lower-risk community, still, we can have 100 people gathering outside. The new part of that is that any outdoor gatherings have to notify the local Board of Health if they plan to have more than 50 people in attendance. And they should, they should notify the local Board of Health at least a week in advance. And they are responsible for providing, if requested, the names and contact information of all of the attendees of the party or event. It's not, it's not, it's mandatory that they provide this information, if requested, for contact tracing. So they're, they can't opt out of contact tracing if they're having an event that has more than 50 people in attendance. All these gatherings and all these events also have a 9:30 stop time in order to disperse the crowd and allow them time to get home before that 10:00 PM cutoff time that's in the, the stay, stay-at-home order. There are exceptions to this rule, and it, it excludes federal and municipal legislative bodies and healthcare facilities, hospitals, and other places like polling places and schools, special needs, housing facilities and things like that. And same with this order, the same entities are able to enforce it, and the same up to $500 per violation is part of the enforcement. But one thing to note that's different in this order is that each person over the permissible limit can be considered a new and separate violation. So if you're a private homeowner and you're having a gathering outside and you have 30 people instead of your 25, you'll be fined, you could be fined $500 per person over that 25-person limit. So that, that's a new enforcement part of this order. And then the last order is the revised order requiring face, face coverings in public places. Not much changed in this, except they have taken out a part that says that you don't have to wear a mask if you're able to social distance. So there's, there's no exemption for social distancing any longer. So in any public place, whether it's indoors or outdoors, a facial covering is required, even if you are able to social distance. So if you are 10 feet away from the person at Town Hall, in the, in the lobby of Town Hall, you still need to put your mask on. So that is new. And then, the only exceptions for that, aside from the usual medical exemptions, is when you're inside your personal vehicle or alone with other household members only. So you have to wear a mask now whenever you're outside your house, and if you're not alone in your vehicle or with just people that are within your household. And then, the other important part is that employers can now ask for documentation about your medical exemption to verify the condition. So a lot of people have been, I shouldn't say a lot, but we, we get complaints a lot about employees at different places not wearing their facial coverings. And then when we ask about it, they say, well, I have a medical exemption. And I'm sure some of that is true, but now employers are legally able to require documentation to verify the condition. And that holds true also for the schools. The schools are able to now require the medical exemption in writing in order to verify that the child does not have to wear a mask. And same with, same with this order enforcement is local Board of Health or their agent, and we can enforce this with the assistance of the police if, if needed. And this is a civil fine of up to $300 per violation. So that's, that's the same, that hasn't changed. So three, three revised orders and a revised advisory is a lot to take in in one day. And I know there's lots of scenarios that need to kind of be thought about and vetted, and we, we will be doing that over the next two days. We did have a call with Department of Public Health this afternoon, and they were bombarded with questions as well, and we did get some answers. But I anticipate by Wednesday, we should have more answers to the questions such as, if you're alone in your own office, do you need to wear a mask? Questions like that. If, if you are, if you share a vehicle, there's lots of questions that we've been, we've been mulling over. And as a, as a town, we're going to talk about our office spaces and make sure we can make everyone feel comfortable. But we, we still have some questions ourselves.
Thank you, Megan. Seems to me you could become quickly overwhelmed with questions. Are there, are there any alternatives? Does the county, the numbers you call, say it's a county or state that would also answer some questions to help you out, or is it, everything has to come through the town?
The state has had an information line throughout the pandemic that the public can call for general questions about new orders or about the virus itself. If people have questions and they're not getting an answer, or they want to try a different avenue before they call us, people are able to call 211, and that will go to the Department of Public Health right now. And they triage the calls, and usually people will get a phone call back within an hour or two if they have a question that can't be answered immediately. So people can try that. And emailing is always better for us to answer questions because we have a lot of blanket responses we can respond with. So if, if people have questions and they want to, want the answer directly from the Health Department, I recommend emailing, and that email is health@town.harwich MA.us.
Thank you, Megan. I'm glad I'm not in your position. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Joe, we'll move on to...
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could take it slightly out of order, but before we touch base with our Chamber of Commerce Director, I just wanted to update the board. Item number C that you'll see that you should have in your packet, of the 16 establishments that had expanded outdoor table service, eight of them have discontinued, seven plan on continuing. We're still waiting to hear back from one other establishment. And like I said, as it relates to Order 53 and the corresponding ABCC guidance, staff is already working on getting that out to all the establishments. So we're being prepped and ready for those questions that come into administration.
Thank you, Joe.
And then with that, I'd like to...
One question. Joe, when did that, when did those requests go out to the businesses? And is there a reason why one of them hasn't responded?
After last Monday's meeting, I directed staff to reach out to the establishments. And I don't know the answer as to why that establishment has an answer, but I'll follow up tomorrow. Thank you.
Joe, or Cindy, I think Joe's passed his floor to you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. So I was going to start out with some positive things, but I think I'll just go quickly with that. We've been working with the businesses to start on the grants that were put out last week by the Massachusetts Growth Capital Corporation. So there are two grants that we're helping some of our members complete so they can get that in by next week. I believe it closes on the 12th. The other positive note that I had was just in regards to, we often talk about how it is to do business with the town. And during this pandemic, the chamber has had the good fortune of welcoming 12 new members to the chamber, which all do business or have businesses in our town of Harwich. This is a lot about the chamber, but also about the town and how people want to do business and have their businesses here. So I just wanted to mention that. Those are my two positive things. But now, as we heard earlier from the governor, which I did listen to during his whole speech, and cringed, and my hair stood on the back of my neck, and thought, all right, now what do we do? So as Joe and Megan mentioned, I also have been hearing from a variety of our businesses, just wondering what they have to do. It is all a lot to digest. So over the next day or so, I'll get with Megan and Joe and just all collectively put together how we're going to reiterate all those safety things that we need to do for the town. So more to come on that. Sorry, that seems to be general, but there is a lot to digest. And we do have, you know, this does take a big hit to the restaurants, so... So uh more to come on that. Sorry, that seems to be general, but um there is a lot to digest and we do have, you know, this does uh take a big hit to the restaurants, so of course, so uh. Waiting to see how we uh help them get through this once again. They seem to be the one uh industry that has taken it um the hardest here. So uh more to come.
Thank you, Cindy. Uh Joe, any more on this?
Yeah, simply, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned at the outset of this, um so the net effect for uh the establishments that come under you is there, as you being the local licensing authority that. What people should take from that is beginning Friday, there is no sale of alcoholic beverage of any kind, uh really anywhere after nine thirty P M. So that includes. Restaurants, that includes takeout and delivery, and that includes package stores. So um that is a, a change to how they've operated and um that is state-directed beginning Friday.
Uh Michael?
And what is that a change from, Joe? What was it yesterday?
So if you think about it, uh establishments could remain open until our local requirements, uh which I believe kitchens were closing at ten or ten thirty. With last service close to eleven, package stores, same thing, they could open up until their regular hours, what they were locally. But putting in that nine thirty curfew is for the intent of getting people home at ten P M. Um so it's a few hours, but it's a change. And, and what that means is licensed establishments ought not to be uh distributing alcohol after nine thirty. It would become a, a violation of their license.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Anything else, Cindy? Or Joe?
No, that's it for tonight, Larry.
Okay, Ed?
A question, you mentioned the grant applications. What, what are the grants for?
So this is for small businesses um to apply for their two. Um one small uh grant is for five employees or fewer. That they can get up to twenty-five thousand. And then a second one is for fifty or fewer employees and uh that's up to seventy-five thousand dollars. And there, there's some guidelines to that, like they're gearing it more towards um women-owned businesses, other under um. Developed businesses that may not have been able to get any of the uh other funding that was available early on, either federal or local. So uh. Just working with some of the smaller businesses um on that right now.
If, if somebody gets a grant, what, what can they spend it on?
So they can spend it on, just like the other items, um hold on, I have it all written down, Ed. Um. It is for um staffing, utilities, technical, just like the other earlier grants. They can't sell, um use them for large equipment purchases or purchase of real estate, construction, but basically it's to support um sta- stabilization of the businesses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's through the Massachusetts Growth Capital Corporation.
Thank you, Cindy. Move next to, to uh public comment. And uh Jamie, I do have one person who would wish to comment, Joe Ganley, if you can unmute him, if he's on. And let me welcome, I understand, uh Selectman Ford, you're on, on the line now.
Hi, I'm on.
Thank you, Steve. Welcome. Technology's fun. We move next to Joe Ganley.
Uh, thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity to uh discuss. I'd like to discuss uh or offer some comments on the agenda item related to the noise committee. I had the opportunity two weeks ago to test.
Uh Joe, let me ask you to hold on that, until it comes up. The noise committee is an item on our agenda. So we'll come back.
I'm sorry?
We, we have an agenda item on the noise committee. I'd rather postpone our, any discussion until we get to the item on the agenda.
Oh, sure. How can you do that?
Anyone else on the, move to the consent agenda?
Okay, move that we uh approve the consent agenda as follows. Vote A to approve Caleb Chase's request in the amount of one thousand dollars. B, vote to accept the gift to the Harwich Police Department of a pet kennel wall unit from Banfield Pet Hospital. And C, vote to accept the resignation from Cindy Williams from the ad hoc noise containment committee.
Second. Any discussion?
Just one, just uh, I just wanted to thank Cindy Williams for her involvement in the noise containment committee. Um she spent uh like most committees that related to businesses in Howardport, Cindy's usually one of the first to step up and, and get on the committee, so I think she's owed a thank you.
Any comments, Cindy? We, we all agree with Michael's view of that.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of it. Um I wish I could have helped more.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote. Uh Steve, I'll start with you.
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
I'm an I. Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Uh moving to new business. We have a selectmen to conduct performance review for the interim town administrator. Now, we have the uh uh town, interim town administrator's goals, actually a little bit of our worry coming up as old business because we'd already discussed that. But we also have in uh Joe's contract that we uh review his uh performance uh three times this year. And so I think we commented last time or two weeks ago that we wanted to move ahead and uh give him an assessment. Uh now rather than wait any longer before the year's out. And so uh that's where we are. We, and we're going, the evaluation that we have is based on our draft. Objectives or goals at the moment. And with that opened up, does anyone care to make a comment?
I'll start, I guess. I'm glad you took these out of order. I, I have lots of comments on the goals and objectives. But as, as mentioned, uh I think last week, uh on the things that Joe has done so far, actually, I'd like to clarify his hire date. For this, for this round, for this performance evaluation. Do you know what the contract date was, Joe?
September first.
September first, thank you. So um in my mind, the town meeting went outstanding and I think that was under your direction. I think that the, we've thanked the entire staff, but you did an outstanding job putting that together and directing, getting town meeting done. Budget, F Y twenty-one budget, um the, you exceeded my expectations on F Y twenty-one budget. I think you had the ability to say no. And I think in the past, we have not had the ability to say no. So I would uh say you achieved, um achieved that goal or more than achieved that goal. And I, and I would comment that um on communication with the board in the meetings. I think you've done a much better job communicating with the board and keeping us up to date um on things that are going on as a board. And, and, and with that, um so I would say that you've achieved or more than achieved and I will fill out the form. I had some computer issues this week. I will fill out the form and sign it as we are going to vote later to do. And you can put that in the packet next week if you want. But I'm grading you, Joe, based on the things that I said last week that I think that you've already done. In reading in the packet tonight, um there's some, there's a few things based on the hire date. And based on a couple of reviews that were put in the packet that I was a little confused by. Uh one of them would, would be the hiring of G H D. I believe G H D was hired. Prior to September first to do the wastewater and that was in a performance evaluation. Um and then there's a, there's a few um things that I'll bring up later, but it's communications related to um staff. And that's something that, again, I'm going to hold that as, because I don't believe on that goal that that's something that the board can measure. But I'll save those comments. But all in all, Joe, excellent job with the things that I mentioned and if I missed anything, I'd be happy if any other board member would, would uh pass along, but. I did mention last week, those were the things that I was going to grade on and, and you exceeded expectation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And uh I guess I'll follow. I had, as, as Michael's mentioned, overall, I, on the scale that we have on this forum. I certainly have you exceeding our expectations for. Uh town meeting went extremely well. Maybe our most pleasant town meeting we've had in some years. You've uh held to the budget going in this year and we have a lot of work going in next year. I think that the uh, you have done an excellent job uh communicating with staff and, and with us moving forward. The only uh issue I think we had in the past, sometimes I heard was uh some communication delays in talking to residents. And I think at the time, that was partially due to all the COVID stuff going on. But I also comment that you've made a, an extreme effort to catch up on that and respond to everyone. And so uh I think it's a great start. Uh Ed, do you wish to uh? There you go. You ready, Ed, or should I?
I, I still have to commit my, mine to.
Okay, I'll move to Don then. And then uh, and I forgot to sign mine. In the packet, mine is the one that's the complete form. Uh Steve is in the packet, uh and he has a, a word document that is separate. Uh Don?
Yeah, I'm finding myself mostly agreeing with everything that Michael had said originally. Uh Joe, Joe uh rolling into town meeting actually was uh very focused on delivering what we asked him to in terms of a balanced budget. And frankly, as a footnote, I uh, I've been going to these town meetings for like three decades and despite the fact. Uh that basically we had to reinvent town meeting on the fly this year and do it outside, do it completely differently. Uh it was one of the smoothest, most professional town meetings in my memory. Uh and. The, one thing that I also wanted to take note of is the beginning of the twenty twenty-two budget process. There, uh and I feel very strongly about this. There's been no evidence of the tug of war that over competing visions of a budget. Uh that the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator have had in previous years. Uh it's been cooperatively and collaboratively developed. And, and we're following this, from the same script, which is really refreshing. I know on a personal level, Joe's helped uh try to rein in the Affordable Housing Trust to normalize what had been kind of a hit and miss process. A real, uh I'm personally gratified about that because he's a very good problem solver. He's active. In the trust's recent CPC submission and I, I found him focused and professional. Now, uh I do, I, I don't necessarily agree with the uh, with not giving Joe credit over uh the C W M P reevaluation because. That was something that came out of a brainstorming session with him and Griff and a couple of other people. And I am going to give him credit for going outside the box and not utilizing the same old, same old. I mean, we, we, I think it's pretty clear and we've all agreed that it's clear that we need to reestablish trust with the public about how we're doing this and how much it's going to cost us and. This was a major move forward as far as I was concerned in order to be able to explain realistically what the expenses are going to be, what the outcomes are going to be. The procurements I'm going to measure, I'm going to mention just quickly, uh he inherited an immense backlog. I think we all agree on that. There was, there were months of. Procurements that were just stagnant, sitting in drawers. Um it's been a massive undertaking. He's regained the trust of the board as is evidenced by our recent vote to delegate him a higher signature authority. And, and finally, uh this is neither a plus or a minus. Uh the, the overall evaluation is and exceeds. In terms of the last goal, the front office has been in a persistent state of chaos for several years now. Uh Joe's appointment as interim uh tied to a real contract. He's begun the task of bringing new talent to address past deficiencies. It's going to be interesting as well as very important to see how Joe staffs the assistant T A position. It isn't possible for anybody to sustain forward progress without having an assistant who's there every day. Not just one day a week or a few hours a week so that they can help him in delivering on our, our high expectations for, for the office. Overall, it's an exceeds.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I need, uh Michael, your comment, G H D, let me clarify that. I, I thought we actually did that after September, but I'm not positive, but.
Which?
They hired a G H D to help on the.
The presentation was after.
The presentation. But uh the point I was trying to make on that is, is that uh Joe and uh with his direction, the staff. Has moved forward to utilize G H D, uh I think to great advantage. And I think we'll, uh we'll try to expand on that if we. Try to decide how we want to go to next. But I, I'm, you know, not debatable that much.
Yeah, I'm not debating it. It's my, my, my problem with it honestly and, and not giving the grade, and I wanted to explain myself. The contract came before that. And to Don's um ne- next comment, that, that the brainstorming with Joe and Griff, which will bring up some of what I'm going to complain about, I think a bit in the goals and objectives is. That hasn't been brought to the board. So some of the, some of the comments, if you read through the performance evaluations and even the comment on G S, G H D. That, that unless somebody can correct me, none of that was board discussion.
Yeah.
We talk about housing committee, we talk about CPC. How is this board member supposed to know about any of these comments and grade when these conversations are happening privately?
Yeah.
And if we're going to get into grading privately, then we're no further along than we were. A year ago with the really screwed up scoring system and having a very subjective performance evaluation. If it's not based on actuals and it's based on your relationship going in and out of the office and having conversations with staff and the town administrator. Then why bother? Why don't we just all write a synopsis at the end of the year and, and evaluate them? And I'm not trying to take away, because you already heard my evaluation. And that was based on what I think I can evaluate you on.
Yeah. Uh, point taken. We did try to bring that up with, with the uh, the full-blown discussion last week with the results of the uh, of the modeling, but. We just have to be sure we get that information quicker then, but we're trying to get that organized.
Yeah, I actually want to agree with Michael in uh about that. I've expressed some concern over the goals and objectives for things that we're creating goals for that the board doesn't actually have a public position on. Yeah. The only reason I brought in the trust is because his participation is in the public body and I know that the preparation for the meetings and the preparation for the CPC. Submission are, are all public documents, but you're right, we do not have enough. Information on a lot of these things as an entire group because we don't have them agendaed and we don't have a real goal for the board.
Yeah.
So it's kind of hard to hold the town administrator to a goal that we don't have.
We'll move on and we'll try to uh correct some of that in the, as we talk about the goals and, uh Steve?
Yeah, you guys have really pretty covered, covered the whole uh landscape for me here, but uh as you know, I did submit a uh. My evaluation, although I did, I failed to sign it, though I will, I will take care of that. Um I, I certainly think that uh of the things that we've asked of Joe. Uh since the appointment, um he certainly either met or exceeded in the categories that, that we felt were important. I E. Town meeting and the other things that you all have brought up. I think one of the things that's helped him, and I think he would agree with this. Is that we as a board have been more coherent in how we're approaching him for the type of uh, uh performance we expect out of him. I think Michael is right. We do need to make sure that each of us knows what we're talking to him about so that there's no. Sort of cross signals on how we are, how we are uh rating or scoring him so that in the end, it's a genuine reflection of the board's uh overall opinion of how he has performed. But again, I, you know, I, I think the whole process is more a reflection of all of us coming together to try to make this work. Uh both Joe from the perspective of being responsive in the ways that we've asked him to, of delivering on, on the goals that we set for him. But also on, on us, uh making sure that we make it clear to Joe uh the types of things we expect of him uh going forward and uh, and I think that's vitally important. Uh so we really do have a major role in this to make sure it's successful. Uh so I, I won't go into all the, the various categories which I did outline uh in, in my submission. Um but I feel that Joe has done an excellent job uh to date and I have a lot of confidence that um, from what I've seen. That this will continue uh and it will be a big plus for the town. One other added thing, uh something that I've really noticed. Uh Joe has uh at a time, we've been through some very difficult times here in the town relative to administration. And uh I, I, I think what's, what's been shown here is that we. And, uh, I, I, I think what's, what's been shown here is that we tend to come together as a team. I've heard from department heads, uh, who were skeptical, uh, as to where we're headed, are now tending to be much more, uh, involved in thinking that we as a town can work together as a team and really deliver for the town, i.e. the budget, uh, and all the other concerns that we have. So, uh, I, I'm pleased with where, where we are at this point.
I don't think we need to vote on this, Joe, but I'd like for the record to state that I, I think consensus is that, uh, you've exceeded our expectations in the, in the scale that, uh, is in our form. Uh, Joe, do I, did you give you a chance to comment?
Well, uh, thank you. Um, it's, uh, never easy to sit through these and, um, uh, no less or more so than tonight, but, um, I, I appreciate the thoughts that you've all put into it and, um, I appreciate where we're at. And, um, whatever things I need to work on, I'll take their heart and, um, understand that it's all for the best embetment for the town, but I appreciate the input tonight. It's, uh, very helpful and gratifying.
Thank you, Joe. We'll, we'll move on, as they say, in many ways. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, item is, uh, discussion as possible to temporarily hot, halt the ad hoc noise containment committee. Michael's leads on to the committee. Would you wish to, uh, drive this discussion?
Yes. So I asked you to put this on, Larry, after the last ad hoc, um, committee meeting. Uh, I had spoken to the police chief during the meeting and in reviewing the meeting and talking to the chair, it really is the feeling that it has turned into something that we didn't give them a charge for. It is, um, I, I feel like they've made great strides. They have voted some things. And I have asked the chair of the committee for a snapshot, a voted snapshot. That's why it's not here tonight. They're going to have one more meeting and vote minutes, um, or a snapshot, as you will, of what they voted, what the votes were and where they're at. And then I believe that based on the last meeting and the, kind of the banter back and forth in the last couple of meetings, that they have, uh, been put in a position where they are now the complaint department. And I think that the Board of Selectmen needs to take a more active role in giving more direction. I think we need to look at where they are. There is a lot of resident complaints, uh, that have been piling up. And I, and I would, uh, take some responsibility for that because I don't believe the Board of Selectmen, as, as I said in the last meeting, has acted on some of the complaints. And I know we have some pending hearings. And I know that, um, Joe Powers, uh, the Town Administrator has given us some new law that we have to look at, as far as how we can, how we can proceed with hearings and, um, decisions that we can make. So I know that's been outlined. I know Joe's going to, uh, at some point, give us an update on when those hearings are and where they're going to be, so that process is. But the, 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 the real point is the committee did an excellent job with the tools that we gave them. And they have gathered information, uh, they have a lot of information. And again, they have voted some positions and we need to look at that snapshot.
Yeah.
And then in my mind, give them some more direction. Uh, I did get a call today from somebody on the committee. Bob Cohen, we spoke, uh, in length today and I assured him that this wasn't a, uh, a burying of the ad hoc noise committee on the selectman level, that we would get this snapshot and then put it on a very near agenda so that the board can have the conversation where they're at and we can give a little bit more direction and we can allow for some public input. And hopefully at that point, we'll have, um, at least some of the hearings underway and, and a more clear-cut, um, path as far as what the, uh, punishments will be and what the board is going to do based on some of the recommendations they have. So I don't, I don't want to get, I didn't, specifically didn't put anything in the packet tonight. There was two sets of minutes that were created by the noise committee, um, one that, um, showed some of the voted items and then there was some debate back and forth on, uh, adding a minority reports into that. And, and I don't think that that's appropriate. The minority reports, I believe, should be asked for and that the board can then hear from each and every one of them, as well as some residents if they want to speak. But I, I, I did want to let the public know, uh, at least I, and I believe based on comments from Selectmen Ford and what the consensus of the board was last week, that we recognize that there's a problem and we recognize that, uh, we have to deal with it. But to have the noise containment committee go the way it went at the last meeting and have things start focusing on individual businesses is not what we set that charge out to be. So I, I would recommend that we halt the meetings for now, get them, get the report and then agenda it for discussion with, uh, for the board and then include the committee at that point.
And on, uh, Michael's, uh, uh, comments, that's why I put it on the agenda, a temporary halt, realize we come back to it. We also talked about adding items in the packet. We decided now was not the time to have a large discussion, but we, uh, we'll bring that back as Michael said. Uh, Joe, is now appropriate time for you to give us a rough outline of some steps that you're looking at?
Can, can I just ask if that was a motion?
That is a motion.
Spend, I'm second.
Second?
For the reasons listed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Joe, you want to comment on that now or you want to?
Well, I, I think the reference, if I caught it correctly, was to the valorant factors, uh, that the board can use anytime you're evaluating, uh, either a license for a license establishment, for, um, a new license establishment or for the renewal.
Okay.
Did I catch that? Yeah. So there's more on that coming during the renewal process.
Okay. Let me just, uh, comment that, uh, I think as Michael's, uh, I forget, either said directly or inferred, is that, uh, I think that we don't feel, it's always hard to speak for the board, but I think as a whole, we don't feel we've, uh, taken actions quickly as we need to sometimes. And so we, uh, with Joe's input and, uh, uh, legal input as well, uh, we've been, uh, been going back and looking at how we can address these noise concerns in a more concrete, in a more, in a, in a quicker fashion. And that's what we're coming to as we move forward. Did I state that correctly, Joe?
Yes.
Michael, you, uh, Don?
Yeah, but further to what Michael said, I mean, and it's actually taking into consideration what Joe's saying. It is really unreasonable to ask a citizen volunteer board to get involved with enforcement actions. It's just not what they're supposed to be doing.
No.
So, uh, getting them to identify problems and, and gen, and problem areas so that the people who do have the responsibility to look into enforcing things, uh, can do that enforcement is really what the function was supposed to be, at least in my mind, when we created it.
Okay. Let me, uh, I know we have several people that wish to comment on the noise. I'd like to ask you to come back and we've, when we put this on as a public hearing and ask such input. Think our charge right now is the board and the reason that we put it on this way, uh, that Michael suggests is to halt the committee right now, get our ducks in a row for our next step is, understand what, what's happened and then have a full and, uh, a, a full discussion.
It's not so much halt, he ju, he asked for suspension of activities.
Right.
And, and, and Larry, if I may, mo- mostly, we, we need to have a starting point. And we don't have a starting point because we don't have a snapshot yet. So the snapshot will be delivered to us by the chair and that would be the appropriate time for this to be re-agenda. Um, and I know Bob Cohen expressed, uh, interest in immediately having, uh, a topic of audible noise. He had some great suggestions about, uh, other communities that have had these problems and how they issue their licenses. So I think that there's a, a, a very in-depth conversation to, to be had based on tonight's agenda. Tonight's ask was only to halt and temporarily suspend until we look at the snapshot and offer more direction. Not to, uh, not give anyone a chance to speak, but, uh, there's a lot of people that want to speak on this on both sides, but the board needs to give some more direction.
So, uh, Ed?
Joe, when, wha- what's the timeline for issuing new licenses?
So the renewals of the, um, annuals will come up by the end of the month and the seasonals will be in March.
Okay. So, so we'll be taking this up in the coming month because.
We have to.
We have to.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I didn't, I didn't give, uh, Bob Cohen a timeline today and I keep mentioning his name. I'm sorry, Bob, if you're on there. But I did tell him that we wouldn't sit on this and I would expect that we would have something brought in the next 30 days. To the licensing point, um, we're going to be, uh, voting the annual liquor licenses within the next 30 days, not necessarily the annual entertainment licenses. And if we are voting the annual entertainment licenses, unless a business demonstrates that they are going to be doing entertainment between the end of the month and when we do bring this up, we don't actually have to issue those, correct? We can hold entertainment licenses past the 30 days that we're going to have them.
I, I, I believe that's correct. And what I was referencing earlier is a set of standards by case law that is relative to liquor license renewal or issuance, separate from common vic or entertainment or anything else.
We don't as a board have to, uh, issue any entertainment licenses until we have this next set of meetings. Unless a business came in and said, you're impacting my business, I can't have entertainment. And then we could take those on a one-to-one basis.
I'm going to take a little.
Can I ask a process question?
Somebody asked, uh, ask a question.
Uh, go ahead.
Can I down off?
So, yeah, I'm sorry. This is Joe Ganley. I had, I had asked to testify on this agenda item tonight through the public comment process. My understanding was I was asked to wait until it came up on the agenda.
Right.
But now I'm, my understa, my understanding is we're now not allowing any public comment on this.
Uh, Michael?
If I, if I may, is your testimony related to not halting the noise com- committee for the time being?
Well, go ahead. That's the case. If you, if that's your point, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess the question I would ask is if, and, and I apologize because I certainly contributed to some spirited discussion at the last noise committee meeting. And perhaps I misunderstood the charge of that committee, having, you know, being somewhat new to this process. And if that's the case, I apologize. The question I have is, if not the noise committee, what is the appropriate venue for residents to raise complaints about specific individual establishments that appear to be allegedly, whatever word you want to use, in violation of either the noise ordinance or the COVID regulations or their license requirements?
Joe, our process would be reported to the police.
Okay, so I've done that on multiple occasions. But at some point, is there enforcement by the licensing authority to review? I mean, I'm familiar with the balance standards. I was tangentially involved in the case, almost 20 years ago, or over 20 years ago.
The short answer to that is.
I guess the question I have.
The, the short answer to that is yes. And, uh, I guess, Joe, you're handling hearings now. Maybe you can just go, you know, just the process. When we get a complaint, it comes through the police and just walk through that for.
If I could, if I could really quickly before Joe says, Joe, uh, first and foremost, nothing that I said was directed at you or the, or the spirited conversation. It was only that it, it had gone past what I believe the noise committee's, uh, charge was. So no, no apology necessary. And, and as I've, uh, previously mentioned now, last week and this week, and I, I don't like to be the guy that blames COVID-19, but, um, this year's been an exceptional year and we, uh, we have failed to bring this forward. Um, and then, and there's some other reasons which I think the Town Administrator will, will, will outline now, but there's some other reasons why this is dragged out longer than it should. Uh, but I, but no apology necessary and I certainly thank you for your involvement.
Uh, Joe, you saw I walked through the process.
Uh, certainly. Uh, so in response to Mr. Ganley's question, um, as it relates to the ad hoc noise containment committee, you know, my first response is, uh, the very title of that committee indicates that it's temporary. Uh, it had a very specific charge, but as with most bodies that are created by the selectmen, the intent of that organization is to report back to the board. Um, where, some of the things that the previous speaker just mentioned relate to, uh, liquor license establishments. And that's an important distinction because, uh, under your regulations as the local licensing authority, uh, you have very well-developed and thought-out, um, regulations that speak to licenses other than the liquor license. In other words, when you grant a liquor license and the regulations are given to that establishment, they're advised through the issuance of their liquor license and the regulations that any other license that ta, established, attached to that establishment can impact upon their liquor license. And so the short answer is it wouldn't be the noise committee. It would be the local licensing authority. But I think the shorter answer than that is, um, if Mr. Ganley or anybody else had any complaints, they should always first register with the police department to see if there's criminal activity or if nothing else to indicate that there's, uh, a record of the complaint. Anytime that there is a complaint to the police department, the police chief and I, um, or the police chief makes me aware of it and I present it to this board to see if you think it is worthy of a hearing for alleged violations under the regulations that I mentioned. So to the question of if not the noise containment committee, who would it be? And the answer would be either, um, either me as staff if, if directed by the board or to the board generally.
Does that help?
Uh, Larry, the, Larry, the board, Larry?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I also want to emphasize that Joe Ganley, uh, has been in touch with me as well and I have been in touch with, uh, with Joe Powers about the issues and concerns that he's raised. And I know that Joe has included them in his consideration of the actions, uh, that are taking place relative to specific, uh, business, uh, businesses or business, I should say. So, Mr. Ganley, I think, is somewhat frustrated and, and I think rightfully so, as are numerous people on certain streets in Howardport relative to a certain, uh, you know, le- level of, you know, so, having supported these businesses for a long time, having been, uh, real promoters of what's been happening in downtown Howardport, but then having it turn into a situation where it just made, uh, you know, day-to-day life and existence around these businesses very difficult. And I know their frustration level is very high. Michael is correct. Uh, we as a board have not addressed this as, as quickly as perhaps we should have. Uh, but I think, Joe, and I'm not sure, Joe, and, and how, how at liberty you are to discuss where we are relative to hearings on, uh, and I don't want to cite specific businesses. But, um, you know, it, it's, it, it is a situation where we do need to find a way to address the concerns of the people, uh, in Howardport who live there and want to be able to, you know, exist, coexist with these businesses. Uh, and, and, and I think, you know, we need to show them, uh, that we have a methodology to address these problems and, and soon. Uh, so, Joe, I don't know whether there's anything further you can say relative to where we stand on hearings, uh, but be assured, Mr. Ganley, that, uh, you know, w- we are well aware of and, and you've been very helpful in making sure I'm aware of it, of the issues that, uh, present themselves. And we are, uh, within legal parameters attempting to address these issues in a way that we hope will be satisfactory to everyone.
So, Joe?
Can I ask one other very quick process question?
Sure, go ahead.
It, it, as part of those enforcement hearings, because I understand the board is the local, uh, licensing authority, is there an opportunity to present testimony in, in written or audiovisual or in person a- as part of the hearing that relates to those particular establishments?
Joe, can you respond to that?
By, by.
Yeah, the, the, the short answer is yes, if it's deemed to be germane. Uh, and the question of germane comes to me as the hearing officer, if that's what the board has, um, directed me to do. However, anyone that is, uh, willing to offer, uh, testimony of any sort has to be willing to be cross-examined, uh, both by town council and by the establishment's council.
Of course.
So that, but, but I also, getting back to Selectmen Ford's question and comments that were made before, I also want to just remind everybody, uh, and, and I'm doing so without the benefit of my files in front of me, but if I recall correctly, I've already dispatched of two allegations against establishments where punishments came before the board as the licensing authority. The punishments were rendered and the punishments were served. And that was related to noise violations that were found to have occurred by establishments in 2019, but because of COVID and other factors, the hearings were held off until 2020. Point is, those allegations were heard, allegations were found to be, uh, accurate. Decision was rendered by me to the board and the board upheld it and the party served it. Some of the hearings that are, are presently in, in abeyment are related to alleged COVID-19 violations, not necessarily for noise. So there's, there's a couple of things going on here, but, so first, I think everybody should be mindful that the local, local licensing authority has rendered and parties have served discipline related to noise violations. So it's no longer a question of whether noise violations occurred. So it's no longer a question of whether noise violations occurred, that's been adjudicated and not appealed. Secondly, what I'm talking about, and when I raise the Ballerin factors and hear questions such as what Mr. Ganley has said and what Selectman Ford referenced, when it comes time for the board to determine whether an applicant is worthy of renewal, that's when the question of quality of life, as it relates to reputation of the establishment, noise, traffic, any number of the eight Ballerin factors that are out there, that's where that can come into play. So what I'm suggesting is, as the board is about to begin your renewal process on annual licenses towards the end of the month in December, and then seasonal licenses in March, that's when you can really rely upon testimony of the community as to whether or not the licensed establishments are holding up their end of the bargain. So there's a lot to come back there, but violations have been alleged and upheld to have occurred, and penalties have been served, and there's still future discussion and ability for the town through the board and the general public to weigh in on quality of life as it relates to those licensees.
Joe, can I just, excuse me, can I just ask a couple of follow-up questions, Joe? Because Mr. Ganley mentioned ability to testify at hearings, and the answer was yes.
Correct.
As long as he understands that he can, I assume people are also, we can invite people to appear in front of us, too, when we start considering individual licenses.
Correct, and I would also add that when I-
That's another layer of input we get from the public, the more formal hearing process, and then when we discuss individual license renewals.
Right, because if the board is contemplating not renewing or not issuing a license, you would then reduce it to a hearing for that purpose. It wouldn't just be a perfunctory meeting to say whether or not you should renew, you would give notice, and that's where the general public could participate.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah, you know, and to the extent that the public is frustrated by the slowness of the process, I think the board, we're also frustrated, and we're frustrated basically in the fact that in the hearing process, the people, the subject of the hearing process seemed to be hiding behind the COVID situation to prevent it from going forward. And, you know, at some point, that's got to stop, and we have to be able to finish out those hearings and that information being presented to the licensing authority of the board so we can take action.
Joe, we're going to move on, do you have any other comments?
I would just say that I have asked to be a witness and to present testimony at any disciplinary hearing related to COVID violations or liquor license violations with respect to the pork restaurant. I would welcome the opportunity to be cross-examined by their council and submit my testimony. So I've submitted that to the town administrator, I have not heard back, I'm happy to do that, whatever the appropriate venue is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the information, so we'll move ahead. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor, I'll take a roll call.
Larry?
Yes?
This is Bob Nickerson, I'm a little disappointed that we, a number of us sat on this meeting all night and have no opportunity to discuss any of this. I think you're being very unfair to us. I know it's good to have a second meeting on this and have more detail, but I think we all should have at least a minute to say a few things.
If, I think not, I think we'll stick to this, I think Michael's expressed as it lays out.
I'm going to mute some of the other speakers for right now, so there's no feedback.
I think it'd be more productive, Bob, I appreciate your point, but I think it would be better off bringing this back when we have it better formatted with the, as suggested, with minutes and a starting point. I want to be sure that it's not just talking, it's productive. So with that-
Can I just say, can I just say one thing then, I'll let it go. We started this with my presentation in May of 2019, 18 months ago. And now, I have a lot of empathy for Joe Ganley and what they have dealt with this summer, but you have not taken care of anything else within the group since that time. So I hope that we can at least get something accomplished when we get back together. Thank you.
I can fully agree with that, I think we all agree with that. Michael?
I agree that there's some things, but I do, I do think, and again, I would like to thank each and every member of the ad hoc committee, as I think that they have, they will have suggestions to present to us, things that they have voted, so I think a fair amount of work has been done. And I would again thank each and every member of the ad hoc noise committee for their commitment and their time, and sometimes patience, and they have listened to both sides of arguments, and they've done a tremendous amount of work.
Okay, with that, I'll take a roll call, we have a motion in a second, Michael?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we'll, motion, we'll bring this back then shortly. Next on the discussion is Chapter 7, 16, bylaw appointment of town council.
Nope.
Did I miss one?
Is that it?
No, no, no.
Mr. Chairman, under new business-
Goals and objectives, I'm sorry, the one we brought to you, this, bring that back.
No, it's a hawkers and peddlers license, so I move that we approve the hawkers and peddlers license for the sale of Christmas trees, Pleasant Lake Pizza Shark, 403 Pleasant Lake Ave, Harwich.
Second, I'll take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So next on the agenda is an update from the interim town administrator on meeting with Chris Wise. Joe, you want to bring this up to?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my anticipation was to, my expectation, I should say, was that I was going to provide a narrative in writing to the board after my conversation with Mr. Wise on Friday, but simply put, it, there was not a lot of substance there, and that's not meant as a criticism of Mr. Wise or myself. Really, it was an opportunity for me to have a conversation with him for the first time in any role here in the town of Harwich, and for me to explain why I made the statements that I made at both the Affordable Housing Trust meeting as well as the board meeting last week. And I do think we came to an understanding of where we're both coming from. Mr. Wise has indicated that quite obviously he's going to keep his options open, I'm not aware that there is any pending project anytime soon, or impending project, I should say. And to that end, we agreed that we would remain in touch, so as I reach out to him in the future, if I hear anything, my first update would be to the board of Selectman, and then to the general public and any other parties, so really just an opportunity for me to explain how I think things should go, and for him to give a sense of the frustrations that he's felt, but also where he may go forward.
Okay.
Other than that, really not much to report.
Anyone else want to comment? Michael?
I just would report to the board that I was asked to attend a neighborhood meeting, a cul-de-sac meeting, as it were, outside. About 30 residents showed up, and they showed up from all parts of town. Most of the group happened to be from the Sherwood, Halls Path, kind of that perimeter around the non-project, I guess we can call it now. But there was, prior to the meeting, I did speak to Joe, and we did, you know, Joe reiterated that there is no project. I did speak to the town planner just to clarify a few things on the development that was approved, in case those questions came up. But it was a very, about an hour, they asked a lot of questions, there is a lot of very concerned people. Several of the people that were there represented neighborhood associations, so they were speaking for much more than themselves. But given some of our, or most of our board meetings don't have 30 people that attend, I will tell you, there is a lot of anxiety. So to hear, just Joe just mentioned Chris Wise's frustration, I think his frustration is 10 times, their frustration is 10 times, because he put a lot of anxiety out there by going through a process all wrong. So I did, I didn't answer any specific questions, but I answered, or anything related to the non-project, but assured them that they would be, that we would be as transparent as we could, and explained how they could sign up on the town website for alerts on housing committee, board of selectmen, so that they could keep their eye on when this subject comes back up.
And I think, just for clarification, what, the only project that we have in front of us, in front of the planning board, is this 10 housing unit, not the 100. And that's what's, and unfortunately, that's the part that has gotten out there, and it's caused a lot of discussion, which hasn't done anything yet. Don, you care to comment?
Yeah, the only real project that the trust has in front of it is the Topassus and Road, which is a small-scale, we anticipate a two quad thing that pretty much is what we have money for in any event, and that's the, and we're not anywhere near doing the public input part of that, because we haven't even developed an RFP for that. We are looking into the engineering to even see if it's plausible, but that's the only active project that the trust has.
Joe, and I always hate to repeat topics, but, and you went through this last week, but this is such an interesting point of what we actually have in front of us and what may be pending, or what the, could you walk us through again what the process is?
Relative to a 40B?
40B?
Sure. So-
So people understand that we aren't there yet.
Sure. Anytime that there is a, well, I shouldn't say anytime, but typically when there is a prospective 40B application, the applicant is seeking a subsidizing agency, and that's some institution, town planner provided me with a list that she has, it's 30 some organizations, if you will, and obviously, these subsidizing agencies have an interest in affordable housing. So the developer seeks a project eligibility letter. In this instance, Mr. Wise had indicated that he was working and conversing with Mass Housing Partnership. So Mass Housing Partnership would be the subsidizing agency, he would submit a project eligibility letter to Mass Housing Partnership explaining everything that he is looking to do and how it meets some level of affordable housing input. That was the reference to Page 7 out of 16, there's a 16-page application that Mass Housing requires. An element of that is, once that applicant submits the project eligibility letter to a subsidizing agency like Mass Housing Partnership, it is automatically and concurrently submitted to the chief executive officer of the town, which is the board of Selectman. And then within that process, the board of Selectman is required to seek input from the public regarding that eligibility and that project. And so it's not to suggest necessarily that the board of Selectman has the right to refuse that, but the board of Selectman does have the right to seek public input and indicate whether they would be looking favorably upon the project or unfavorably. And then from there, any number of actions could occur.
Okay. So we're on hold, and there's something if and when something would come to us through this mass housing.
Right, in the meantime, that was the conversation that I had had with Mr. Wise, that while I understand why he was trying to seek public input, he was seeking public input through public bodies, and that's where the confusion came in. And so my suggestion, as I evidenced last week by my memo to the board, would be that applicants may want to seek input directly from the community, separate from public bodies. Not that you can't do that, but that's where confusion comes into play. And so one of the things the board could do upon receipt of a project eligibility letter is direct staff to direct that to any and all committees that would have an interest or an opinion on such a project, like the housing committee, Affordable Housing Trust, planning, zoning, whatever the case may be. Any number of entities that represent the town could also weigh in, in addition to the community.
Okay. And to further clarify, in doing so, there's nothing prevents Chris Wise or anyone else from talking to you, Joe, to get some advice, talking to the other, the third, you know, the planning, zoning, conservation, to get informal input before they were to apply to something. So that's not, that, every resident can do that as well.
Absolutely, and I would always argue that it's beneficial for all parties. If they have a conversation with me and administration, I can then immediately present that to the board as information, and anyone else that should be aware of it, which is not something that the public bodies have a right to do because of all the requirements that public bodies are held to.
Our point, though, is, is the starting point, once they come to the towns, go through you first, and you can drag it to the proper staff person.
Amen.
Correct, okay. Michael?
Any word on anyone reaching out to the chair of the housing committee to retract their vote of support of the non-project?
I have it. Did Don have you talked to him?
Well, Steve is their liaison, I had asked him last week.
Steve, I'm sorry. I-
I have not talked to him.
I did tell him on the trust call that he needed to withdraw that vote, but I'm unaware of whether he scheduled the meeting to do that.
Steve, can you follow up on the status of that?
I will do that.
We do have a couple of people who wish to speak to it. I'm not sure, I'll give you like 30 seconds, because there's not much we have to speak to now, since we don't have a formal application, but Penny Shields is one?
I don't see them on.
Trevor Libby?
They're on.
Sorry, this is Nicole Libby. I guess I would hold my, any comments until there is a project in front of the board, but for now.
Thank you for that, because that's our position as well, we like to have something concrete to react to. Don?
Yeah, I just want to give it an overview. Everybody can opine when the time comes, but that petition against this is upwards to 1,000 names now.
Yeah. Thank you, Don. That ends that discussion, we'll move next to town minister, interim town minister's goals and objectives, and I think we had several, I guess before we go, Mike, we have some comments, but would you rather have, this is a draft, would you rather email me some comments to build into this?
Absolutely, Larry, I have no, I have no intention of holding this up. I think if everybody looks back to my five years of talking about goals and objectives, we've been all over the map, and I don't believe that we've ever all agreed. I went from, I think what Chris Clark, past town administrator called 300 goals and objectives if, because he looked at the actions and deliverables. So Larry, when I look at these goals and objectives, and I do thank Stephen Ford for putting as much time into this as he can, I just, I think that they're so basic, and I think that the achieved, the achieved, his goal would, should be basically the starting point, below expectation, as far as the way I read the scoring, and based on what the actual goals are with what you call measurables, I don't see, I don't see how he, unless he just didn't do them, how he could get anything less than achieved. And I think for, if you just bear with me while as I pull these up, goal number one, goal number one, develop a budget for FY 2022 that is at most 2% higher than FY 2021, and then you tie it to our goal. This isn't a goal, this is charter-driven, he has to do it. And we gave a directive, and the directive is, no more than 2%. So, Joe, and you went through these with Stephen in detail, maybe you would disagree with me, but you'll certainly achieve this because you have to. If we look at goal, goal number two, work with various housing committee CPC to specify a housing goal which furthers housing availability and fully utilizes financial resources, well, that doesn't get us any closer to housing, and that is a very, very, very basic goal. We have $1.3 million in the bank, and I am sure that the town administrator will exceed that goal because he is project-driven and he wants to, but what's, other than, which furthers housing availability, what's the actual measurable goal there? I don't see a measurable goal. And I started this with, I'm not going to hold it up, so if you guys want to vote the goals so that Joe has goals, we can have them. I have a few more comments, unless you want me to stop, and I can email them. Number five would be my last one.
Could I just interject before you go any further?
Sure.
And I think Selectman Ford would bear me out on this. My contribution to this document is the headlines from my job description. So anywhere it says results-based goal, 1, 2, 3, that was to tie it back to the job description as a basis point. The first measure under the first goal is what I added, all the other goals- measure under the first goal is what I added. All the other goals, I think, except for one, came from the draft goals that you all were working on over the summer and into the fall. So I just took from what you were, I took it as a starting point, to be honest.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. And again, by no means, Joe, am I trying to tie this to you.
So I wouldn't object to the criticisms because it's not my work.
Right. So the la, so the last goal, and I can go, there's two other ones I was going to comment on, but I won't. But the last goal, results-based goal five, leadership. Work with department head staff to ensure positive two-way communication and overall rapport. How do we grade that? It's been brought up how many times that we're not supposed to talk to department heads and we can't talk to department heads? So why is that a goal when we can't grade them on it? And I'm only going based on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grade Joe on overall, and if this is a basic goal, I'm just saying it right up front, I'm going to either meets it, achieves it, or exceeds at it. Just like tonight, I said you exceeded, and it was based on the town meeting and, and the FY 2021 budget and your ability to say no, because we came light years beyond 2020 and 2019. So I don't see anything measurable for me to vote on and be fair to Joe and be able to give him any grade other than achieve.
Well.
And rank him myself for effort.
Don, and I.
I hear Michael maybe handing out effort certificates. Anyway, the only place I do disagree with him is that, and I put it in my evaluation, is we, we have had a more or less content, you can fail with the budget instructions, because we have had a arm wrestling match with the previous town administrator every year. We said two percent, he said seven percent. I mean, so you can fail by just being obstinate and not wanting to go along with the goal that we've established. But having said that, the goal we established is really an important aspect of this, and I've said this before, DHY is in here. We don't have a position on that. How can you rate the town administrator on how well he did pursuing that when we don't have a goal to pursue it? We're engaged in conversations and you can grade his work in furtherance of fleshing that out to bring a presentation to the board, but the implementation of it is really up to us. It isn't up to the town administrator. I feel uncomfortable rating him on things that we have not established ourselves what defines success.
Yeah, I have a comment on that, but Ed?
Yeah, you know, it's, well, we constantly are having the problems with terminology, you know. We have results-based goal one, there's a dash municipal finance and budgeting, and we've, as I understand it, we've already voted on that goal. And these are the, more the implementation measures, which we keep on referring to as goals, too, you know. And I think we need to stop confusing that. But, and I think, you know, to a large extent, Michael's correct, there's, coming up with some measurability in these measures is, is still a tricky thing to intuit on our behalf when we are in a position of rating or scoring the interim town administrator's work. You know, and it's also, as Don indicated, you know, some of these things we haven't really taken any particular position on. So, you know, and, you know, maybe we don't, you know, like taking DHY, which seems to be one of those things that has a fair amount of definition around it. Our position may not be that we adopt DHY, but our, our position certainly should be that we develop a wastewater plan for the west portion of Harwich that minimizes the cost impacts to the taxpayers of it. And if DHY is the one that does it, then that's what we go with.
Exactly my point.
You know.
Yep. Good. Thank you, Ed.
I just wanted to defend you really quick.
Well, we all need you.
This would be quick. And Steve, so with that said, and on DHY, three is the only number I didn't write down. So I thought we, we did discuss this based on Don's comments, and I think you changed that to possible rephasing of phase three to Harwich Center, West Harwich, to potentially join Dennis Howard Yarmuth. So me, I read that as Joe's going to put something together through GSB or GHB and, and water, wastewater superintendent in Griffin, and propose something to us that might make sense. So that is a measurable goal. For me, three.
Measurable measure.
Yeah. Three, and entirely, in its entirety, though, there's actions and deliverables in that.
Yeah.
That I see as something that Joe can over-deliver on. Us rating his communication with department heads, you know, I sent, I did send, just before anyone says that I'm tearing this apart and being critical at the last minute, I did send things like the email, I sent you a one on developing town-wide email. Because one of the things I got out of the residents in East Harwich this weekend was the day-old complaint of they go to the website, and Jamie, I'm not talking about you, they go to the website and they can't find a department head. And the board of selectmen's in there with our email, so they're, they're having to call, listen to the menu, figure out what department they may or may not want to, or take Danielle's time or somebody in the front office to find out who Art Bowden is and how they can get his email address, which happens to be his private email address from a past life. And if you look at, and this was a goal that I sent you, Larry, that I thought we should do, but every committee member should have a town email address. And that takes a lot of public records requests away. And if you look at, and I'll throw another town out there, if you look at Chatham, every employee, every department, every committee, it's a very laid out, if you need to talk to somebody that's ahead of the housing committee, the chairman's up there and it's the head of the housing committee. And I'm not saying that we have the resources to do that right now, but that would be a great goal for transparency, which I did send that to you on Joe's, and I did send it to you on the board of selectmen's, but it didn't make it. That's measurable. That's my only point.
And actually, would you resend that? I actually lost track. I don't remember that.
I will.
Let me just, Ed, follow up then. We're going to ask Steve.
Okay. And this has actually nothing to do with, with our agenda item, but it had, in reference to what Michael was talking about with emails, you know, as secretary of the Selectmen's Association, I'm constantly having the battle of keeping track of all of the selectmen's email addresses on both the Cape and the Islands. And most of the town's website are absolutely useless for it because you, the only way you get, you can email somebody is you find the selectman, then you click on it, and up comes a page to send it, to write your email and send it. It never gives you the address. Well, in, with my computer, I'll type in a message using their email page, and it's incompatible with my operating system and it won't send. So not, not, and so, but I can never find out what their email address is because it always stays hidden.
So we can do better.
You know.
Steve, wish to comment?
Well, you know, this is certainly a different approach than you're used to, putting numbers on people's value. This is a more, I think, a little bit more of an intellectual challenge, because with each goal or each results-based goal, it wasn't my thought that you, you read it only for the words that are in the goal. You look beyond that. You look at how that person delivers, you know, what methodology they use to do it. And my expectation is that each one of us on all those goals would be commenting much deeper into how Joe performed to deliver, whether, whether you feel he can deliver no matter what because he's been ordered to do it. That, to me, isn't really, isn't really the end result. The end result is how the individual has delivered what we've asked them to do. So, I mean, I know it sounds a little deep, but we found over many, many years of initially rating people in the corporate sector on a numbers basis, that, that that just didn't really reflect the skill sets, the need for change in attitude or approach. I mean, there's a lot more to each one of these things, I think. I accept the criticism of all of you relative to how, how it's set up. But, you know, I will tell you, it certainly is something that, you know, and in many cases, even though someone might have accomplished a goal, I still them, still gave them did not meet because of how they approached it and what they did to get to that goal, which might not have been as productive as they hoped it would be. And in other cases, they might have done it and just said, well, the selectmen said I got to do it and I'll, and I'll deliver and that's the end of it. And you might give them a meets. But in a case where the individual took the initiative to maybe create something new around how that goal would take place, for example, how Joe approached the town meeting and the delivery that he had there, that, that comes to an exceed. That comes to an exceed. So as I said early on, I mean, I'm wide open to, you know, you know, and I'm not, I'm not the decider here. It's, it's up to you guys. But I, I don't see any evidence at all whatsoever that previous scoring systems that you use have been effective in any way, shape or form.
Michael, then we'll.
Steve, Stephen, I agree with you. And I, by no means am proposing going back to numbers. We, we've had at least five years of between forties and ninety-nines. And that's come, but how, how do you, I guess I'm going to go back to what, and I believe I sent you goals and objectives at, at one point that I did, but it.
Actually, Mike, Michael, I, I never did get any, Michael.
Okay. I know I sent them to Larry. I'll send, I'll send them back to you, but just as, just as a, for instance. But there's results-based goal number two, work with various housing committees and CPC to specify a housing goal which furthers housing availability and fully utilizes financial resources. Now, that's a very, very easy goal for Joe to obtain with no real substance to it, because I don't believe that there's an action or a deliverable in there that would, that we could subjectively say he went above and beyond.
Well, are we always looking for above and beyond, though, Michael? That's, and I don't mean to interrupt you. I apologize. But, you know, what, what we're looking for is, is he successfully utilizing the assets and, and the, and the resources that we have available to further the housing objectives of the town? Now, you may look at it one way and say, you know, I don't think you did. I think you went down a road that was not productive, and, and therefore I feel, you know, that you didn't meet the goal. And here's why I think you didn't meet the goal, and here's why I think, what I think you need to do in order to improve. Now, I might, or Don might, take a different tact and say, actually, I think you had the right approach. You know, I might have taken a different angle on it, but I think you're getting towards what we need to do. You're working correctly with the committees, you're identifying the assets that we have. However, you know, here's two more things that we think you need to do at this stage in the game in order to deliver for us. I mean, it's more of a, I don't know. Do you see what I mean, Michael, at all on that?
I do. I, I am definitely following what you're saying. Joe, I guess the next question would be to you. Are you comfortable with such a, with no goals and with no actions and deliverables without, you know, a pre-expectation of the board for us to subjectively say, you know what, you did, you did come up with a plan and you said next year we could build something because we have 1.7 million and not 1.3 million, and then take the grade and the criticism that you might get from five different board members? Or, in your professional opinion, do you think it should be a little bit more defined, and we'll get into number five again in a minute, do you think it should be a little bit more defined with an action and a deliverable so that you can, you can, I mean, you and I had a very brief conversation on housing the other day, and I think you, you know, you were up for the challenge based on the, the trust was the conversation, and the amount of money we had, and the conversations that you guys have had. So you, you had some energy to you, and I, I would feel that you would exceed that goal. Should we define actions and deliverables a little bit more to you so it's not as subjective? Or are you comfortable with these very, what I view as basic, starting parameters?
So I'm, I'm chuckling just a little bit because my answer is going to be a little bit cagey intentionally. The, the board and I, the board and I, as two parties, struck an agreement that was executed on September 1st. And within that, it requires the board and I to collaborate on goals, because the board has the right to review my work three times over the next, what was now going to be seven or eight months. And so, as I said at the outset, and, and I freely admit a bias, when selectman Ford presented this form, I'm very familiar with it, having worked in the same corporation as Selectman Ford, although we were cities apart. So this concept works for me, but it works because there's meant to be a dialogue between the two parties, and I don't know that we've had that directly. I know Selectman Ford and I have, but not as two parties to a contract.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, I keep going back to the one I'm more familiar with. I know Michael's doing the one with staff. What troubles me is these goals, maybe committing Joe to make progress is something that we don't necessarily even want. Let's take the housing goal. The way it's written right now, he could, he could get high points from us for pushing through housing, but what if we're in a situation like we're in today where he facilitated the movement of a project that nobody wanted to see happen? It's still listed there as facilitating, housing is the objective, even if it's not the objective of the community in a particular project. It's a little dicey because it's subjective, I mean, in that area.
Right.
Right. But, but excuse me, if I could, Don, you know, the, the point there is, though, that what he's done is dealt with that situation. You know, I mean, I mean, I think this is true.
Trust me, I appreciate what he's done.
I mean, it's, you know.
I really appreciate what he's done, but my point is absence guidance from some other body like us, just putting it out there that, yeah, build stuff is not necessarily the entire goal because we may not want everything that's out there.
Okay, Joe?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I think, if I may, I think where we are is that we've gone this far, and I think we've, we're following Steve's concept of building these goals rather broadly and having some subjective discussion, which relies on each of us having individual discussions with Joe on house workings, two-way discussion. I do think that if you want to send Steve and me, because I'd help coordinate this, Steve, some minor tweaks to this, we should do that before we finalize them. And let's do that. Michael, you have some things you want to send me, Don, and the housing, but I think we've gone this.
I think it's too late in the game to do this, this, for this contract, for me. I'm just pointing out, in the future, they need to be more aligned.
Well, let's move ahead with this. I entertain a motion.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
Motion's fine. Moving it forward's fine. As, as far as results-based goal number four, I just need help understanding. Develop strategies and commensurate plans for various departmental reorganizations. And does that, should that be followed by and report to the board? Because are we, is, are we asking for Joe for a plan? I guess that's.
We're asking Joe for a plan.
And that's the way you read that, Joe?
That's right.
So if I may, I mentioned that.
And, and Larry, and Michael, you know, I, I want you to be satisfied with this because, you know, we, we need to make sure as, as a board that we can use this to unify how we, how we, how we rate Joe. So if we need to make those kind of changes, let's make those before we, before we do anything else.
We can correct that later, Michael.
And I, Stephen, I will send you, and again, I have no, no desire to take apart something that's taken forty-five to sixty days to get to where we're at. And ultimately, there's not one on here, I do think we need to remove number five because we can't measure it. I don't, I don't, unless somebody comes up with a mechanism, number five about communicating with staff, unless there's a mechanism for us to be able to understand how that's happening, why bother putting it in there? The rest I can make.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it is a shame. Yeah, I mean, it is a shame, and I did want to address that concern you had. It is a shame that we as a board don't have the ability to have a sounding board from the other individuals in the town that report to Joe so that we can get a sense of where it stands. You're right, Michael, that does make it very difficult.
But the second part of that is measurable. The committees and the...
Yeah, the second part I'm not...
Second part is.
I only read that one line. And then, so I would be happy to send comments or even vote on it as it is because in the end, it is going to be a subjective opinion that we're gonna have an open conversation that Joe can debate back at us with. And I want to make sure that there's no confusion and that Joe, if I were sitting in Joe's seat and we got to the end of the year and I would say, "No, you guys are wrong. I did every single one of these. Sorry, I didn't do it to your satisfaction and that's why I keep harping on actions and deliverables because I believe it isn't as subjective and it's..." And I will put that into writing, Stephen, and that's the basis for my argument.
Okay.
Ed?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the proposed performance management plan for the interim town administrator.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with comment.
Comment.
I think Michael still needs to submit that because if this is going to be the jumping off point, which I think is better than what we've done in the last five years, then we're too far into the evaluation period to keep shifting what we're doing. So, I'd be happy enough to do, act on this. Michael can put out what he wanted to.
And I would like to do that because even with that motion, we can fine tune this in the, in the concept we're going with.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
As I said in the beginning, I'm not trying to roadblock this. I have to vote no based on what, based on what the conversation has been, but I want everyone to understand and Joe to understand, it's, after we vote this, there's no context to come back. If I were Joe, I'd say, "You guys are crazy. You just voted goals and objectives. Now, you're gonna pitch more at me?" And maybe he'll accept them, maybe he won't. If I was sitting in his seat, I wouldn't because we're voting something that's in writing in front of us with no edits and revisions. So, vote it and not angry, Michael. I am 100% gonna do my scoring, Joe, and subjectively, and again, in my mind, there's no way you can actually get anything besides achieved.
Okay. This, we have a motion in a second to move ahead on this. I'll take a, I'll take a roll call. Stephen?
Hi.
Michael?
No.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so we'll, gets this as a format, we'll learn as we go forward. Ed?
Well, you know, and I made the motion quite honestly because I think we need to move.
Yeah.
Move ahead. I have some questions about some of the terminology, but I think let's work for, work with it this year and based on how it works out, we can know better next year how to phrase things.
Yep, agreed. Okay. Thank you. Moving next then is discussion on appointment of town council. Don, you brought this up.
Yeah, we're, owing to the time, I think we could delay this for another agenda, but I will say that I asked you to put this on here mainly because I personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, have not been impressed by John Giorgio's representation of us as the lead counsel. I am particularly troubled that he sees no conflict of interest representing DHY and us contemporaneously, and another town, I might add. And I've had my run-ins with him about evaluating contracts without looking at both the request for proposals and the award to make sure that they actually matched up with each other in the past. So, with all of that, I really would like to have a fuller discussion about where we're going.
I recommend we bring this back then. I don't think it's time sensitive and we have some issues and actually...
But we haven't done it in years. That's why I wanted to do it.
Michael?
Do we want to bring this back as part of our legal review?
It is, yeah.
Not legal counsel review, but also open cases. The board has always given an update on open cases. Do we want to do this as a same agenda item as that and make it a...
Sure.
Make it a thing?
We can.
I just, I want to leave on a positive note. Don has his concerns. A year ago or so, I had my concerns about John on one particular thing, but I do think John has represented the town well over the years and whether or not we go in a different direction is, you know, maybe it's time, we've had other law firms in to pitch us on labor counsel in the past, maybe it's time to look at exploring other law firms, but I don't have, personally have a problem with any of the work that John's done.
Or even a different lead counsel in the same organization.
I was gonna say, KP is more than John, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, he brings a lot of different expertise, so.
Got that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Ed?
You know, I've worked, John has been the lead counsel for, I think, all the time I've been a selectman and God knows, I have disagreed with him on a whole number of specific opinions and have gotten the board to overturn or set aside his opinions on a couple of cases, but I have never particularly been dissatisfied with the way he's represented the town.
And I do appreciate he's always accessible. We've had some other lawyers that they're, they're good, but we can't get them.
Well, he lives in Chatham.
Okay, moving on to the procurement process, Joe, next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I won't take too much time, but this is the second and last step of process that the board has asked me to undertake and that I've been desiring to undertake and that's really to update the procurement process as it relates to 30B and get into a situation where there's greater tie-in between administration, the procurement team and the department heads as the primary procurers. What I'd like to do is not read the memo because you have it in front of you, but just point out some of the elements and the workflow. I had a conversation with the department heads on Thursday of last week. We have a follow-up tomorrow to go through this packet and some other topics, but I think the timing is also fortuitous as I have, knock on wood, I've tried twice before, but I'm scheduled for procurement classes, the three basic courses I need to take to finalize my certification process as a certified procurement officer. But everything you have in front of you relates to 30B. I would, I would want to just draw out the assumptions that you see in the center of the first page. That is that most of the procurements that we do are governed by Master General laws, chapter 30B, which is supplies and services. Most of those procurements are at the threshold of $50,000 or less, which is why I had asked the board previously to establish $50,000 and less under 30B as a tool for me to expedite procurement. You can see that I've got documents that are in the packet and what they really get to first is an Adobe fillable form, so just as I mentioned, this is an Adobe Acrobat form that's gonna be sent to all the department heads and anyone else, if it's a committee chair that's doing procurement. With that, the components of a purchase description and that's taken directly from the inspector general's manual on 30, chapter 30B purchasing and then the table that goes with it. So, the workflow essentially is that the department head or procure, I use the phrase "staff lead," would use that fillable form to fill in all the appropriate fields there. So, we're asking for beyond the lead and department, what was their funding source, so that's where they'd have identified most often, that it was a town meeting article or CPC article, a town meeting, or if it's a line item within their operating budget for their department. How much is available, that's the appropriate amount and what the estimated cost is. In the end, what's going to determine the level of procurement is going to be the actual cost and that would be known only as they go through the procurement process. The procurement method line gets to the table that you see there, so if it's 30B and they're talking about under 10,000, they see the steps they have to take. If it's 30B and it's 10,000 to 50,000, the steps, and then anything over 50,000, which has several steps, as well as requires the board's authorization to execute the contract. So, the department head or procure, when they're ready to procure something, fills out the fillable form. The procurement team then uses that to fill in the Microsoft Access database that we have and to me, that's critical. As you may recall, a year ago, you had asked me to do as interim, excuse me, as assistant town administrator, to provide an update to the board on outstanding procurements and we didn't have a tracking method. So, this is an opportunity for, once they begin the process of identifying what they're looking to procure, that data is then added to a spreadsheet so that we can regularly update and track what's going on. So, you can see on page five of what I presented in your packet, that's an example of what a, an almost completed checklist would look like. So, the example, the sample that I used there is an actual procurement that needs to take place. So, you'll see in this example that I'm the lead in the administration department. The funding source was 2019 annual town meeting, article number 12, item 3. The appropriated amount was $60,000. There was work that was done before I arrived that indicates that the estimated cost is under that at 46,960. That estimated cost right now, if it holds true, tells me that I need to use 30B, $10,000 to $50,000, seek at least three written quotations. And then the most important part from the procurement standpoint, and this is really where the tie-in with the staff leads, either department heads or committee chairs, is they need to be able to articulate a purchase description and that's why I have a single page in there talking about that. That single narrative becomes the most important part of everything we do because it forms the basis not only for the solicitation for vendors for quotes of the item, but it also becomes the primary documentation that would, would the audit to be, excuse me, with the procurement to be audited, the first thing the auditor's asked for is what was your purchase description? What was your, what was your declaration of what you needed? And so, we use all that, we drop it into Access and then...
Excuse me, go ahead.
Sure.
Let him finish describing it.
Sure. And then lastly, you can see on the checklist and approval form at the bottom, once we've taken the data from their fillable form, we've put it into Access, the procurement team can print out this report and it then gets circulated to the finance director who tells us that there is funding available. She identifies the org and the object and then I would give authorization to proceed. So, that's the steps that take place to then seek the item on the marketplace. If it's $50,000 or less, when it comes back, as I mentioned last week, we would use DocuSign to execute a contract between the vendor, myself on behalf of the board and the finance director indicating suitable funds. And then I follow up with a memo to you all identifying the procurement that took place. In the instance where it's over $50,000, we use this as the basis to then get into the broader and more complex concept of request for proposals or invitation for bids.
Okay.
That was the quickest I could describe it as.
And I think this hits all the bases, except I understand this is about a building, but it'd be nice if you clearly said what building?
Bank Street.
Oh, sorry. In my effort to...
An article.
Yeah.
Which sends me to digging for my old town report.
Yeah, sorry, that's 203 Bank Street, also known as one of the older fire stations.
Asbestos was the key word.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I also want to draw, there's two things. There's a typo on the second page of my memo, but the second page of the memo talks about the process flow that I'm gonna talk with the department heads tomorrow on, but you'll see when I talk about, I've been authorized to do 30B, 50,000 and less. There's also instances where there might be a chapter 30, section 39M. I have it as 30B, 39M. It's chapter 30, 39M and that gets to public, public, it's construction non-b buildings. And then chapter 149 would come into play and that's when it's engineering and construction services that relate to a building. So, there's one area that I can do the vast majority of, but there's other instances and it gets to the bigger projects. So, as I roll this out to the department heads tomorrow, we're gonna be able to get the bulk of the work going, but it's not gonna be everything. And the reason why I say that is I sat down today with Griffin and a department head to get into a complex project that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that that sort of procurement, once you go, once you realize all the steps that have to take, could take anywhere from six to eight months. So, these are meant to be the quick hits. The vast majority of procurements that we do are under 30B and most of them are 50,000 or less, so that's probably that 80/20 rule of 80% of what we do is 20% of what we spend overall.
Any questions for Joe? Michael?
Joe, the last paragraph, can you get that, whatever that was, confirm the town administrator role was submitted in 2016 along with designations for the library director? So, that document would be helpful and then...
Are you saying you want to see what was submitted?
Yeah. I want to understand why, why we wouldn't have to file or at least encourage everybody doing procurement to file that document with the IG's office.
So, what that gets to is who is the primary role? So, the reason why the library director and the water, wastewater superintendent is, as it says in our charter, they're, they report to autonomous elected boards. We could have added in the charter also say school expenditures, but it's already understood that both Monomoy and Cape Tech do their own procurement, so I wouldn't have any sway on that. It gets to who is the primary person responsible for procurement and under the charter, that falls to the administrator. So, what that filing says is the town administrator handles procurements for the town, except for in these two instances where the library director does it for the library and the water, wastewater superintendent does it for that operation. The only time in my reading of it that something would change is if the charter changed an element of that procurement authority. So, it's filed for the position. I read the previous submission, there's nothing new to add and nothing has been delegated, meaning while the department heads can assist in procurement, the final execution of the contract either rests with me or with the board.
So, follow-up. The, is Dan Pelletier and Jenny Hewitt procurement officers?
They're procurement officers, they're not certified procurement officers.
Okay. And is that important?
I think it's, I think it's very wise for municipalities to support employees going for their certification. Spoiler alert, you're supporting me as I go for it. And it's two elements. It's three required courses over a period of time and then numbers of years in the role. So, the vast majority of my years I brought with me from other towns, I now just need to have those three elements. I believe most recently, Carol Kapolar, our finance director, within the last year, met the requirements of, she took all the classes, she already had the expertise and experience, so she's certified. You want to have as many certified people as you can because auditors like that.
Yeah, so that, I guess that's a follow-up would be, I know Carolyn Carey's certified.
Correct.
And is, you were gonna tell me who else? Is Griffin?
No, so Griffin is waiting on, Griffin, Dan, Jenny, I believe, and Sandy are all waiting on years of service. They've all done the courses. Carol and Carolyn are already certified and I'm just waiting to go through the courses.
Okay. And then, so that doesn't pose any problems that you're still waiting to get because you're the designee town administrator?
Correct.
That doesn't pose any problems that you're not certified?
Correct. There's no added liability or anything like that.
And with that said, I guess with that last paragraph, the only thing I didn't see in the checklist that we've talked about recently and for past years is the letter from the chief procurement officer saying, "I recommend this project to the board of Selectman."
So, that was the one element that I couldn't get done in times, but that's the importance of the Access database. Everything that I'm deriving from their forms, because then they get dropped into a memo to expedite all of that. So, going forward, I was hoping to get that into your packet, but you'll see that whether it's a contract that I executed or it's me recommending a contract for you to execute, we'll have all of those elements. So, what you'll see is you'll see the memo and all of the backup documentation that is in the packet here.
So, it's, you're saying now that all procurements after tonight will have a letter from the chief procurement officer, i.e. you, saying that you recommend this project?
So, in the short term, no. I don't want to commit to that. What I'm saying is any... So in the short term, no. I don't want to commit to that. What I'm saying is anything that is 10,000 and above that requires contracts will have that. Spoiler alert for any of the department heads that are listening right now. We are going to be talking about capturing all procurements, however. So I'm hopeful that we can get to that, and that would be a great goal to add to my goals.
Okay. So I would move that we move to approve the town administrator's procurement process rollout, including memo from chief procurement officer recommending the project on projects over $10,000.
Second.
Second. Joe, good job. I like it that you've, I think sometimes we got confused in the past and, and the department heads weren't leading the charge on procurement and didn't feel always had a good input into it. And this straightens that out. So they're, they're involved. And I like the access database so we can keep track of, easily keep track where procurements are. And I'm hoping that that database will be accessible to us, maybe to others.
Oh, absolutely.
CPC, you know, people that are watching activities as well. Ed?
Sure. So for purchases under $10,000, will be done by the department heads?
Theoretically, yes. I haven't had a chance to follow up with the finance director to talk about what level and when we want to see contract. So when I say contract, I mean standard form that you've seen from KP Law that covers 10,000 and above. But what I, what I will be asking the department heads to do is just make administration aware of the procurements that they've made. And I'm going to reveal tonight what I expect to be a controversial discussion tomorrow, but it's one that I've seen over the last 18 months that I think is absolutely critical. And that is, I need to be able to articulate to you. You need to be able to articulate to town meeting, how much money did we spend on toilet paper? How much money did we spend on? So these are random items that, yes, everybody's purchasing, but when you aggregate them, in one instance, and ironically before pandemic, it was toilet paper, we had spent $16,000 over the first six months of the fiscal year, but three different departments were the bulk purchasers, and each department got a vastly different rate from the same vendor. And so what I want to be able to do is not necessarily get into bulk purchasing or centralized purchasing, but through access database and then put that back through Excel or, you know, vice versa, or import-export relationship to MUNIS perhaps, is be able to quantify, how much are we really spending?
Okay. Ed?
I guess I just like, you know, if the purchase is being done by a department or authorized by a department head that in, in whatever file is maintained, that there's a memo recording his recommend, his or her recommendation.
Sure.
Just like somebody were asking for you on larger purchases to provide your recommendation.
Sure. And I can add that element to this rollout. I think that memo that you're talking about dovetails nicely with the other element, which is the purchase description. You need to have a purchase description so it stands to reason that you should have an articulation of why this is happening.
Yeah. And, and quite honestly, the, those two elements can be part of the same memo.
Absolutely.
And they, they really need to get approval from Carol on those anyway, right? They have to know that the money's--
Say again?
They have to get approval from Carol anyway, correct?
Right. They have to demonstrate that they have the funding when they go forward on our procurement for sure.
The only other comment I would make is, is a strong emphasis on everybody involved in procurement should take the classes at very least. And, and I think that, that we really should push for, procurement's been a nightmare. It's certainly been a lot better under your reign than it was, but it's been a nightmare.
And if there's been an upside to the pandemic, it's that there's a lot of self-directed classes right now, and they may go forward with that in the future, which I think really would allow us to broaden the participation.
Before we vote, Steve, I know you're involved in this. You wish to comment?
No, I think it's been pretty well covered. Thanks.
Don?
Yeah. I didn't know whether to wait for the vote or not because it's not explicitly about this, but it is about contracts. This is definitely a quantum leap forward, and everybody's right. This has been a holy mess for a long time. I do have one question, though, and it's, and don't read into this, but that your predecessor seemed to take the position that when the charter was talking about dollar designations and everything, that it was just 30B. That's it. If it's an exempt class, I have the authority to do this and you don't necessarily have the ability to tell me no. I mean, he expressly said that, to me at least.
No, he said it in front of the board.
Yeah. Well, I mean, exact, again, I just want to make sure that it's not just 30B. We're looking for transparency in more information about contracts, not less, just in general.
I'm going to speak for Joe except this time, and he understands transparency element. He's expressed it several times.
Because it was extremely frustrating to have somebody say, "You don't need to know about that because I have the authority."
Right. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, I'll start with you, Steve.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Ed? Don?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on next to contracts.
So before I get into that, I just want to identify that I'd be asking the board to hold off on items A and C. We didn't not, we did not expect for them to be in the packet as we don't have the backup material.
Okay.
I think it may have made the packet online. But I draw your attention to item B, which again does not contain the memo that I talked about, but I would indicate, given the need and what's being presented, I would strongly recommend that the board endorse the procurement that has been outlined by our town engineer and the memorandum to me dated October 30th for the purchase of, let me see here, for the purchase through Specialty Vehicles, an ambulance for the fire department valued at $329,905. It's on the KP Law 30B Supplies and Cock Track template. Finance director has confirmed availability, as you can see there. And the ambulance was purchased through a cooperative purchasing program, which is allowed under Chapter 30B by the Commonwealth.
I move that we vote to execute a contact, contract with Specialty Vehicles, Inc. for the purchase of an ambulance for the fire department for $329,905.
Second. Other discussion? Michael?
The last one, I'm voting without a memo.
Yeah. Fair enough. I'll take a roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief. First, I would ask the board if there would be consideration given for, for going your meeting on November 30th. So as you know, the week before is the week of Thanksgiving. It essentially gives staff two days to work on anything that might come before the board because we'd have to post by Wednesday. I think we'd be rushed at that point. So I would ask the board to consider at a future meeting, perhaps voting to forego that meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Thank you. I'll let staff know on that one. I also want to advise the board that, as you may be aware, Danielle sent notice out to all the annual license holders for service of alcohol. I did hear back from an establishment that is requesting that the board consider waiving or reducing the fees related to that. I did tell that individual that my understanding is that if the board were to do that, your fee policy requires you to conduct a public hearing, which requires at least 14 days' notice. Essentially speaking, if we use the Chronicle, it couldn't go in, would have to have been in today for the 14-day notice to get it ahead of the 30th. So if the board is considering this, I can advertise in Cape Cod Times, which can expedite that, so you can at least take it up on your meeting three weeks from tonight.
And what's the background of this? Why would we--
I think just given the hardships of where establishments are, that they, they would ask the board to consider reduction or waiver.
Any comments?
Yeah.
We're going to struggle with this one. Don?
We establish a contractual relationship to do these, public hearing notices, correct?
I'm sorry?
We have some sort of contractual relationship to do these postings with the paper of record, as far as I understood it.
Are you telling me we have to do the Chronicle?
I'm just wondering if we, I mean, especially for the future too, whether, because I'm not saying that, that I wouldn't agree to bending things to do that. But I think that in the future, we might, might want to consider that there's a prospect of this kind of thing happening, and whatever contract we award, we have a fallback position so that it's stated that way going into it. But this is so clearly, I mean, this is a pandemic. This is so clearly exigent. I, I've got no real problem with this, but in the past, you put out a, you put out an RFP and somebody becomes the paper of record.
I think you gotta, I think this is great that it's under the town administrator's report. I think this has to be agended for a full conversation. I, I think if we're going to make a, an exception, that exception's gonna, is gonna ripple through the entire town. And I think that the board, if they're gonna consider something like this, should probably consider some back, some backup information as far as the hardship, other than just the pandemic, the losses other than just the pandemic. And I, and I think the board has been exceedingly nice as far as outdoor expansion goes, and we've done everything we can possibly do to help the businesses. We, we really need to get some sort of revenue projection, loss revenue projection for a budget that's already been voted. I don't believe this is as easy as one request asking, and that person did reach out to me via email as well. And I did see Ed was CC'd on that email as well. But I, I don't think this is a conversation to take lightly, and it was, it was almost, it's almost like the waiving of the Christmas tree permit. And I know it's much different, and I feel bad for these restaurants, but this conversation has to include some numbers and, and some real thought, not just an advertisement and voting this, because we can count on it across the board if we, if we pass this.
And I'd like to understand it better because our fees aren't that high. I'd be surprised if they were material to the success of a restaurant. I mean, it's a gesture, but Ed?
You know, I, I think we're running up against a, a time clock on, on some of these issues, but I'm not entirely sure that it wouldn't be impossible to collect some of the information instead of having a hearing, even though it may come after the time that we go forward with granting the licenses. And if, after the hearing, we feel that enough of a case has been set to ask for, to warrant a potential reduction, that we could do that. And in essence, if, if, if folks had had paid their full amount and we decided to reduce it by 25% to rebate that. But, you know, I think it's a, you look at restaurants with the limitation on the amount of services they, they've been able to do, and the fact that most of them were, in terms of serving alcoholic beverages, were, were closed completely for three months and have had a significant limitation on, on what they can do in terms of service.
I agree with this. Let's put it on agenda just before we have a hearing, just to see, get some basic information.
So do you want an agenda item for next week and then we can figure out next steps?
Yeah.
We'll do it.
Just so we understand it better.
We can have an agenda item for next week if you have some information to give us. But, and I think you're going to need to reach out to some of the business in town to get a sense of that information. You know, if it takes two weeks to get that information, I'd rather wait than--
Okay.
Have a, have it on the agenda next week with nothing particularly to talk about.
What sort of information would the board look for? I suspect if I asked establishments, if they wanted a discount on their fee, they would say yes.
Well--
The impact on us, for one.
Well, it is, one would be the impact on us. But also, you know, they, you know, everybody would like to have their taxes cut. But the issue is, what's, what's been the impact on them that would set the precedent for us considering doing a reduction?
And then that becomes a different question. It's how much they want to share with us too.
Yeah, you know.
Michael?
Well, I think a more simple approach, instead of making this town-wide, Joe, my, my own sense is that this should be an ask for hardship exemption of some sort. And that would be what I would like to see as a conversation. Are any, are any of the other communities doing this? Is the state doing this anywhere? Is there, is there any other relief before we get into it? Again, we voted a budget that included all of this money. So the impact to us is certainly important to us, but I think these probably should be on an individual basis based on hardship rather than a blanket. Not all restaurants are going to ask for this. So do we want to make a statement that we're just going to blanket, give back 25% of the licenses?
Oddly enough, I'm the vice president of the Chatham Drama Guild, and it does have a bar, and that subject came up. And Chatham is talking about individual hardship cases. So that's one place to start.
Yeah. Okay.
You know.
Two more quick items, if I may. These are under the guide, guide of potentially good news. Griffin Ryder heard back from Department of Transportation last week on ongoing conversations and the topic of a sidewalk from Sacrotech at Howard to Harwichport. The DOT is indicating may be eligible for the tip program. So it may be coming back before the board in the next few weeks for an agenda item. But according to Griffin, the state has made some significant inroads on that project and don't want to get too excited about it, but the potential could be there. So more to come on that one. And this afternoon, Beth Wade from Habitat for Humanity advised us that they were able through the Marie Lane, if I'm saying that right, project.
Yep.
Six new houses are added to Harwich's subsidized housing inventory, which I believe brings our number up to 342. So progress made for sure.
Good.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Selectmen's report. Don?
Two things. I know, I think you conflated the email you got with the email I got, but I really would love to double back with Sevek about the community center because I was not really fully aware myself of all of the elements of the project for the canopies and everything. And one of the residents there who's not the one who reached out--
Oh, I, I, okay, I'm following you now. Yeah.
--pointed out that he really has been in the dark. I know there's going to be a public process, but you know, the guy, the guy actually is literally a split rail fence away from where these things are going to be. It, I think it's reasonable that before you start saying, well, you can show up at town hall when there's a meeting at the ZBA, that somebody contacted him officially, not here, but Sevek. If indeed the canopies are going to be 20 feet tall, and if indeed because of them being in a parking lot, they may have lighting underneath, there's a whole lot more than I was thinking that we were approving.
Right. And just get to the end of that. I know I sent Joe you an email because the fellow was looking for a diagram of the solar panels at the community center, and he couldn't find it. Had to go through Sevek. And I know I sent Joe and I think Jamie, our creator of the, email asking, "It'd be nice if that were on our website, those types of plans, so it'd be more accessible." That was his, his concern. It was really, without obvious how to get that information. So I don't know, Joe, where you are on--
I couldn't find them either. That's why I was saying--
So the, the vendor jumped the gun. They had put in application. They were working on plans to go before the planning board, and we still haven't finalized all the requirements from the town side. So Charlene was able to do connect with them, and they've withdrawn without prejudice. They'll file when it's appropriate. But quite simply, we didn't have any of that information, and we're still trying to figure out which project going forward and which one is going to have an estoppel.
Okay.
If I may, very quickly, I--
Wait, before you leave that subject, Joe, because I still think it'd be good to be sure we're more transparent and sort of third-party activities and bring them to our website.
Sure. Yeah, my, I guess what I'm trying to say is--
Just in general.
I don't have any information on that either and was caught flat-footed when I heard about that as well.
Okay.
And I apologize, and I promised Link that I would present this, but what's going around in Selectmen Ford, I'll send it to you by email. But there was a situation on Saturday that there was a shutdown at the transfer station that, that impacted upon one of the busiest days. Long story short, Link's team was able to collaborate. Well, could have been a very messy affair over the weekend. Turned out to be a case study-- messy affair over the weekend, turned out to be a case study in collaboration and teamwork. And so Link has this memo that I provided to you folks. I also want to identify the individuals, Richard Berube, highway manager, Sean Libby, facilities manager, Tom Gagnon, mechanic, Dave Redington, senior equipment operator, Steve Hershey, heavy equipment operator, Matthew DeLuce, heavy equipment operator, and Andrew Neal, tractor trail driver, tractor trailer driver. Most of them gave time above and beyond their tour of duty, took them about seven hours, but there was no impact to the, to the trash-removing and recycling general public, and it was work that was well done, and we'll make sure that each of these individuals has this in their file as a letter of commendation.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Yeah, this one's more benign. Because of COVID, over the summertime, everything got messed up. The town meeting didn't happen when it normally is, does. We had voted a town meeting to convey the, the authority to the Board of Selectmen to disperse funds from the flagpole, but that was going to have to be done on a yearly basis. We couldn't carte blanche, just vote to funnel the money to the Affordable Housing Trust. It needs to be agended, because we have not done that for this current year.
Okay, good. We can do that. Ed?
Yeah, a couple weeks, weeks ago, I announced that the Lower Cape Quan, Quanus Club was doing a sock collection, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the public who donated socks. We wound up with over 250 pairs of socks, and I wanted to thank the businesses, which included Harwich Paint and Decorating on 137 and East Harwich, the East Harwich Fire Station, Murphy's General Store on Main Street in Harwichport, and the Seal Cafe on Main Street and Harwich Center for their participation in it, and I think it was such a, well-received by the agency that we passed the socks on to, and we've had a discussion, and we'll be putting together, and, and we'll announce shortly, an additional collection for the cold weather, one of coats and sweaters.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ed. Michael?
No report.
Steven?
I just want to remind everybody to be sure to get out and vote.
Thank you, Steven. I-
Stay here much longer, it'll happen.
Happen now.
Like in a couple hours.
I have nothing, so entertain a motion.
Yeah, no question.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Michael before you-
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Ed's an aye, Don's an aye, I'm an aye. Thank you.